Good evening. It's 6:30. We have a call. We'll call a planning board meeting to order. For your supplemental information is Jeff Squire.
Jeff Squire from the Brookshire Design Group. I've got a site plan application for the 97th Russell Street at Hadley Garage.
Okay.
Just plans, building elevations, and an application form, a letter of labels. I've been in probably a month or so ago. Two sets of letters.
Put there a quick look at the plans?
Sure.
So this is... You don't have enough green space.
Yeah, it's more than what's there now.
That doesn't count. You've got to have greens-- you've got to meet the requirement.
Even though the rest of the site is non-conforming?
That's correct. Because you're changing the use.
Okay. Well, we can pick up. We can pick up.
Okay.
It's only a couple hundred square feet if you have it set off by much.
Yeah, you only have by a little bit.
Yeah.
Oh, forty square feet.
Yeah.
Not a lot. What is the green space?
On the side, in the back.
Do we want to discuss anything else?
No, no, we're gonna let just quickly go over things very, very broad-based. We can, we can cut the details because it's not fair to have cut it apart too much on light or make too many comments. Just the obvious, very obvious ones, that's all. And you've got parking for this building to be over here.
We've got the, in the table there is the anticipated, right? There's fifty-three spaces I think total.
I guess I don't understand your table. Steve Lewis is going to have ten.
Yep.
Future tenant, six.
Right.
Esselon Coffee, two.
So they've got, they've got a storage space there which occupies two spaces.
Oh, oh, for the, this is for outside, we'll sit here today. And so there's thirty-one extra spaces.
Right.
That could be used for these guys or for this, these guys. All right. We can go into that in more detail. This dilapidated building is going to stay?
That's going to stay, and there's building elevations and plans for how he hopes to use as his storage space.
So we're trying out a new system. Make sure the fire chief gets a copy of the plans.
Okay.
So when you file one set of plans with the town clerk, with filing fee, you're going to give her a second set of plans for the fire chief.
Okay, okay.
I want to move it here.
And there's seven in that pile there.
You can give one of these to the fire chief.
Okay.
Because I normally put one in their mailbox.
Gotcha.
So you could put that into their mailbox.
And not, not to the clerk.
Hand it to the clerk.
To the clerk.
Hand it to the clerk. She will make sure he gets it.
Understood. Okay. And do we need, um, is there one that's, is there an extra? Well, there's a building that should, should have been.
Oh, with this one?
Building elevation.
Public hearing for 121?
Should be fine. Okay, is that where we're going to have the public hearing on the, uh, regulations for?
Well, we're not going to make it for the seventh for sure. But we can make, we can make the public hearing for the regulations on the first February, first Tuesday in February, okay? This project is something called Hadley Garage redevelopment?
Uh, sure. I didn't know what else to call it.
That's why I just asked you to, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It's ninety-seven plus.
Ninety-seven plus, yeah. Less glamorous. Check it out.
This storm, they've been knocking down the sides everywhere. Well, I wouldn't be for it.
Great, great.
Great.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Run, Keith?
Hi, Mark Keith. I met with Timmy yesterday and conservationist this morning, and he just wanted me to run these plans by you. We're trying to put a garage, attach to a garage at 322 Russell Street behind Sheldon Falls Coffee Roasters, Sunray's Printing's property.
Okay.
In the unused portion of the parking lot that's been out there for many, many years.
Okay.
They just told me to submit the plan, show you guys the plans. This is the existing that was put in five years ago. He wants to put in a fifty-five foot by twenty-eight, more storage capacity.
What is this for again?
He did it mainly for storage.
No, where, where is it again?
322 Russell Street, Sunray's Printing.
Okay.
The Sheldon Falls Coffee.
He'll need site plan approval. How big is the garage?
Fifty-five by twenty-eight.
So it's over a thousand.
Fifteen hundred square.
Fifteen hundred square feet. How big is the existing building, Sunray's Printing?
Well, it's not attached. I don't know how big the existing building is.
Okay, yeah, he'll, he'll need site plan approval.
All right, so what do we go to next?
Well, you've got to, this gentleman just had a whole bunch of plans all drawn up, so you'll need seven sets of plans, the application fee, drainage calculation, parking calculation, everything else.
All right.
Okay. Who, who's the engineer on this?
The Sparkle, Buck the Sparkle.
Oh, I mean, I'm not familiar with him.
So he's over in Stanton.
Okay, the, uh, the site plan approval site, that is, well, it's not in the act. What is that? Where, right, Sunray, Sunray, Sunray Printing, right next to, uh,
Right next to Staples.
Right next to Staples. The old Johnny Greens.
Oh, okay.
It's all in the back parking lot.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's, no, that's not.
The, anyways, the, uh, the requirement for site plan approval, right on the zoning bylaws on the Hadley website, go to, what is it, Hadley MA?
HadleyMA.org, and the bylaws there, sort of a cookbook of what you need. But let me check about the aquifer. Yeah, I checked.
It's close.
Yeah, but even about the garage that just left, we've got to check that too.
Is it not in the aquifer?
Flood plain, maybe, if it's not in that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, flood plain, you're right.
Clear with the map on your table?
Yep, we do, we'll see. Probably Jim explained with the engineering and the peer review and...
Yeah, we'll get it all to you. We just go to the engineering board.
Okay, but if, once you do drainage calculation, you'll need to get that drainage review, handle, application reviewed by one of our reviewing engineers.
All right.
And those are Brookshire Design, Mark Donald, um, your list. Okay. You can go to any one of these companies and basically negotiate a price with them. You don't have to go to any, any single one.
We don't tell you what, there's a choice between around three or four. No, I guess I don't have it anymore. Uh, not in this notebook.
That's fine. We'll call Brookshire tomorrow.
Okay. Because of Brookshire, Hatchmuck, McDonald, um, I don't know these guys, the other ones.
Yeah, so it is in the aquifer.
Okay, so you're also in the aquifer, so you're going to go, well, yeah, but you're going to comply with the aquifer anyway because you're not putting, you're going to put a garage, kind of, just for storage for Sunray's Printing?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, it's right through the existing blacktop.
Okay.
And it's been there since the Johnny Bulls.
Okay. Well, we'll just have to mark it as, when you come, maybe we'll apply, let them decide as a special permit for that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. The, I've handed out to you guys a calendar for next year if you want to use it. If not, that's fine.
Thank you, thank you. It's been pretty empty this month, the calendar.
Yeah, and also a copy of, I marked up the Whately bylaw of affordable housing trust for Hadley. I sent everybody an email copy of it that has the printing and red on it, just when it didn't come out, or kind of came out late. But the few questions I have that we can go over later, like there's, you know, are the dollar amounts good? Do we want to change any other wording? Does everything look okay? And, you know, it's, it's kind of general, but I took out some of the stuff that Whately had because it was very particular. And I've kind of laid up, made ours a little bit more broad-based.
And I forgot to send you all the, all the copies I have of affordability stuff, so I'll just get that out to you.
Okay. We do have a bill to pay to PVPC. We're waiting for Quatero. The amount of, this is for their contract with us, it's for seventy-five hundred dollars. This invoice is for four thousand, seven hundred, fifty-two dollars and four cents. For regular, well, for when Patty and Ken come here and talk to us and do the work, so non-consorting work to help, to help us.
So let me just, the, uh, One thing, Mark, that I, I've misinterpreted a little bit is that section three Board of Trustees, composed of at least five trustees, determined by the select board, at least one of whom shall be a member of the select board. And, and then of whom, one at least of the planning board, I assume there was going to be one member of the planning board. Jim said, no, the planning board is going to be the, the.
I'm going to recommend to the board select one that for the time being, to kick this off and get it going, the five of us and one select board member be the Board of Trustees.
Because we're up to speed on this.
Yeah, and once everything gets going, if, you know, projects come along, then it, then we can go from there. But for the time being, just a matter of having a, a fund and a group to manage the fund, that's all.
So there, um, Ken had sent Jim and me an email that there must be another invoice on its way because we basically consumed the seventy-five hundred dollars. But most of it was on MS4, and I talked to David Nixon, and there is an article for compliance with MS4. So I asked Ken to break out the, the portion of that bill that relates to, um, MS4. And David Nixon will pay it out of DPW money. So maybe we should just pull this.
I was going to say, because there's a lot, a lot of Patty time in here, and that is almost exclusively MS4, so let's not pay, let's not, let's leave this alone.
Yeah, so we should be getting a revised bill. I just had that conversation with David today, so.
So quarter seven, open the public hearing. The Hadley Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, December seventeen, December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, beginning six forty-five PM in room two oh three of the Hadley Town Hall. Purpose of the hearing is to review the application of Philip Myers for a special permit, change of use to a fitness and martial arts training facility at thirty-five Lawrence Plain Road, former spice company. Said change of use is a special permit issued by the planning board. Application and plan may be viewed in the town clerk's office during normal business hours, published twice in the Gazette, December three and ten. You're on.
All right.
All right, uh, board members, anybody else for the public hearing, welcome. Um, so I'm here to talk about the application for a special permit and the use of the, the space at thirty-five Lawrence Plain Road, which we are in the process of purchasing. Um, and, uh, it is our intent to use the, the building to provide movement-oriented fitness programs, including martial arts, dance, yoga, all, you know, basically movement. It is our belief that through movement, connection to the self, we can encourage healthy lifestyles, increase, you know, focus and confidence in our members, and create community through shared experience, as well as promote healthy, healthy bodies and minds. Um, I've been involved with the Shaolin Kung Fu Center at Hadley. We've been, um, teaching classes for, you know, old and young life for fifteen years now. Um, and we believe very strongly in the value of these programs to the community, to people, especially children who attend. Um, and it is our hope to create, you know, a kind of center place for the community at this location for these kinds of programs. That's, that's the pitch, yeah.
Hours and days of operation.
Um, we will typically, um, it depends, there'll be a number of different programs. I can say, from our experience at the martial arts school, we usually teach classes five days a week. Uh, sometimes, you know, six, depending on the semester. We usually do less in the summer, more in the, um, during the school year when the children are more involved. Um, but, you know, it's Monday, uh, Monday through Saturday, uh, pretty much. Um, for the most part, classes are typically held in the evening, since most of our clientele are children, we usually wait for them to be out of school, um, from about four till eight in the evening, technically.
So not, not a lot during the day usually?
Sometimes, um, on Saturdays, we do have a morning program from ten till about one thirty to three. Um, uh, there's not a lot of activity during the day, but during the summertime, of course, we'll probably have more options, especially doing extended programs for kids who are out of school.
But during, typically during the school year, Monday through Friday, there's not much operation.
Not, not a lot during the middle of the day, yeah. People are working, kids are at school, so, um, you know, I would like to be able to offer more throughout the days, but it's when the clientele is available.
Expected traffic, how much?
So it obviously is going to depend on how many of the student body, but we expect on average ten to twelve cars, depending on the program. Um, sometimes there's a little overlap in the program, so that's when you get a little bit more. But most people come, and especially for the kids programs, they come and drop their kids off, and then they go, you know, go shopping or something like that, so they don't usually stay on site for very long.
So what's the turnover? Do you have four classes, four to eight PM, or are there different events going on?
No, typically it's.
People coming and going?
Yeah, so, so, um, I think we wouldn't usually run more than one or two classes at a time. This space should allow us to be able to overlap classes a little bit. Um, you know, like maybe have a dance program running and a martial arts program running, um, but, you know, so that, there may be a little bit of overlap in programs. But, um, you know, a lot of times it's, you know, it's, uh, uh, you know, we run like a kids program for like the beginner kids, and then the intermediate or older kids will do, you know, their own program, that sort of thing.
And how long is typically a class, like a, you know?
Um, so most of the kids programs are about an hour.
Okay.
Um, you know, the adult program that we run is an hour and a half, uh, long, typically. Sometimes, um, if we do throw like a special event or a more intensive program, uh, for workshop or something like that, that could run a couple hours, four, not as much as four or five, you know, depending on the training we're looking into.
Signage?
Uh, we do plan to use the existing signage, uh, on site, just to modify it for the use, um, if, uh, you know, for the, um, for the martial arts school, and, you know, if we have a dance program or something like that, we have multiple signs to, for advertising, but.
Just for your information there, part of going through the site plan approval is I send out a notice to all the departments in town. If there's any unpaid fees, unpaid taxes, unpaid bills, they notify me. And there's an unpaid water bill for the spice company. Now, I don't know who's responsible for it, if it's the spice company or the owner of the building itself, but it's not, it's, it comes to like, I want to say, six or seven hundred dollars.
Okay.
We can, we will not issue an approval until that bill is paid, until proof comes to us. So what we could do tonight, if this is soon, we issue a conditional approval. Once the treasurer or accountant or whoever it is notifies the clerk that the bill's been paid, he will then issue the approval letter. But until that bill has been confirmed paid, I don't know, it's something, you know, I don't know who, who pays. I tried to get a hold of the owner, but when I had her, I have her cell phone number, but that cell phone goes to the spice company, so I was, why do I want to get involved in this? I so want to, I tried to notify the owner, who didn't have her number.
Okay.
I'm letting you know. And I just, I mean, it's like, it's not a monumental bill, but it's still an invoice. Okay, so just let them know that somebody's going to pay that bill. I don't know who it is, and let the plant, the planning board know when it's been paid.
Great, yeah, we've been, we're in a lot of contact with the owner, so we'll make sure that that gets settled.
So just a little detail, but I want to make sure, I don't want to surprise you with it.
Great, no, thank you.
Or hold anything up unnecessarily. Other questions from the board?
Lighting, any change in lighting?
Uh, no, there's going to be no changes to the current layout, you know, the lighting at the, for the outside lighting, no changes to the, the building exterior.
There was a question about the numbering system there, thirty-five or thirty-seven?
Yeah, that's, uh, I still have a question about that too. I know the D says thirty-seven, but they.
There's two, two pieces of paper. One says thirty-five, one says thirty-seven. It's not a big deal for us. I mean, it is what it is, whoever the correct number is.
I've been thirty-five Lawrence Plain Road, Bayville Firewood, since the go.
Okay.
And they gave, for some reason, gave them the same number as mine.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
We, we are more than happy being thirty-seven.
Yeah.
You don't need the thirty-nine. If thirty-seven is what's on the D, we're happy with that.
The building inspector assigns numbers.
Sure.
So, uh, and he's not here tonight, but, uh, you can contact his office. They should have the answer to that, and if there is a duplication, they'll, they should know about it, so. Well, Timmy knows about it, but we tell him to change it, but they won't.
Who's they?
Yeah, that woman.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, it'll be a new owner, it's going to be, correct it easy enough.
Because if the fire trucks come, they're going to go to that spice place.
Well, there's a fire, they're going to know.
Well, if they need an ambulance, they're going to know where it is.
Yeah, that's pretty obvious.
So thirty-seven is the correct number.
Yeah.
Your thirty-five.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it should be thirty-seven.
Yes.
I think it's what the D says.
It should be.
Yeah, so we're happy with that. Yeah, she's, yeah, anyways.
Any other question with the board?
Um, the spice company, do we know what hours it operated? Was it?
They, they, they're, there's, they have a work crew that starts early in the morning, and they work until late at night, but it's really a crew of probably two or three people, and there's no customers. The only customers that are, that come in is on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, when they have their little store up front open. That's typically, what, ten to three or something? Yeah, so their hours are limited for the actual customers.
Because I was just wondering, if they don't have, you said you weren't planning to change the lighting, but if they're, if they were not having activity outside with customers, you might find it with, you know, kids and adults who might need lighting, so I'm.
Yeah, I believe they do have adequate, at least, uh, something to have.
Yeah, they have, they have some kind of lighting out there because it is, a lot of the windows are on.
Yeah, so.
Any other questions with the board? Audience, yes, sir?
I'm a director of butter, Michael Lewis, thirty-nine, Lawrence Plain. There was a question that Mrs. Kirby or Ms. Kirby and I had discussed about a light on the back where the garage bay is. She's been very well with it. She told me she, they wouldn't use it because it directly shines into my back of my house.
Okay.
That's the only issue with that. That being said, now that this is going to be open for a more, uh, business type than Ms. Kirby ran it, is it going to require a sprinkler system?
That is, that's up to the building, that's, that's outside the jurisdiction of us, but it's a good question for the building inspector and department. I don't know. You know, they'll, he, when we approve this board, we're simply looking kind of from the outside of the building. When zoning, parking, drainage, stuff like that, I mean, all that is adequate. When you get to the inside of the building, he's, excuse me. The applicants are specifically notified and noticed that the only approval this board is giving is zoning. Anything to do with building, fire safety, and those, and then Board of Health, they still have to go through the channel. We are by no means trying to bypass. That's, that's a good question because of the change of use. I don't know.
Yeah, that is a good question.
Well, I, we did read on the thing that we got from our town clerk, that they're doing something with the septic system.
Yes, so.
Now, how does that play? Do you guys govern that or not?
He can explain what that happened, but in nutshell, the original septic system was designed for the small use that it was.
Yeah.
Since he's having, obviously, more customers or people inside of it, the system needs to be enlarged to whatever it has to be enlarged to. And, um, they're going to be going forward with that, whether, obviously, whether it allows.
Probably, probably, Mark, we're just, um, really, uh, we've been working with Alan Weiss, and we think it's just extending the field a little bit, just to cover extra trenches.
Board of Health jurisdiction.
Yes, ma'am?
I have some questions. What's the definition of local business?
It's related to zoning by law. Um, it's, okay.
To accommodate smaller business activity, which is located at the edge of residential areas, but which serves a larger trade area than the immediately surrounding residential neighborhoods.
That's it?
That's it. That's, that's, that's the definition in a nutshell. And then, when we, when you go through the zoning table, it has all sorts of topics that is the local business covers. For example, um, probably the big, almost any business is allowed on Route Nine, could be allowed in scale in the local business district. Okay? Some things require special permit, like a change of use to this kind of, they call it some assembly area. What cannot be done is, let's say, um, well, his parcel's a good one. He has a single lot that's probably a little over an acre. Behind him, Mr. Keeler has a lot that goes beyond, but it's still some of his, you know, some of your land is in a business district, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Those two lots can be combined, but you cannot take, let's say between the two of them, they have a five-acre plot. He has an acre and a half, and let's say Mr. Keeler has three and a half acres, and I don't know what the numbers, I'm just putting those numbers together as, as a, to explain to you. On a one-acre building, an acre and a half building, he could build approximately a, probably a sixteen thousand square foot building and meet zoning. Mr. Keeler, on a three and a half acre plot, could put up roughly almost a forty thousand square foot building and meet zoning. If you combine the two plots, you'd have five acres. No building can be larger than a building Mr. Keeler could block. If you've got five acres, you could put up theoretically a sixty thousand square foot building. So if you take two lots that are existing today by separate owners and combine them, you cannot create a very, very big lot and put a very big building on. You can only put a building on each individual plot that allows, meets current zoning for each individual lot. Did I make sense with that, or did I confuse you?
Well, a little bit, but is he going to be paving there?
No, no, we have no plans to do any paving or changes to the lot whatsoever.
Because I have an issue with that too. And originally, the spice factory was supposed to put in a retaining pond, and that didn't happen.
That's correct, because that retaining pond was twelve feet deep below the level of Route Forty-seven.
Okay, I have another issue.
And, and we told the develop, we told the engineer at that time, that is way too big and way out of scale for what the property is. This property has an underground drainage system that works.
Okay. When Mr. Benjamin's property was approved, nobody thought about where the water was going to go, and it comes across to a block drainage dish that. And it comes across to a blocked drainage ditch that floods the Smith's property and our property. So if there's any more water coming out that, it's going to affect us. And nothing's been done about that at all.
The town, Mr., like, we, that, that's, that happened a number of years ago. The water coming off of his prop, off of the Spice Company property will be no worse three months from now than it is today. It'll be the same. As far as the Benjamin property flowing water, the selectmen in the town allowed him to tie into the drainage system that's on forty-seventh, which wasn't supposed to be done.
Which is blocked. And it floods our ground.
No, but that, that just made more water to go into that ditch. And because over near the big buttonball tree there-
It's blocked, that tree blocks it.
It's been blocked for years. And it just overflows the ditch down into Wilson's property.
And on ours.
And ours, too, it floods it.
That, that's a separate topic from what we have in front of us. But I, I understand that, I live across the street, I know.
Yeah, yeah, well.
So the Select Board and DPW have, have money to buy ditch cleaning equipment that's a priority.
Yeah, but they don't use it on my ditch.
Well-
It's the only ditch that never gets cleaned.
They haven't got it yet.
I would suggest you-
Is that what the override is forged, or the?
No, that, that was the last override.
That was, that was approved, that was approved in the spring.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's a separate topic, but it's a good one, because we don't want neighbors to walk out of here thinking we're ignoring you. They have ditch cleaning equipment, they have been cleaning some minor ditches. Get a hold of the DPW director, Chris Okafor. And he is very anxious to be cleaning ditches and clearing, because he's getting, he will be getting the equipment, or making use of the equipment, is a better word, in the spring. They have been cleaning some ditches and it's been making a decent difference in certain parts of the town where they've done minor cleanings. He may need a written easement from you to clean your ditch, and from the sound of it, you're going to be more than anxious to give it to him.
Yep, yeah.
And hopefully, a lot of the problems will clear up. I'm not going to clear up in, you know, the next, there's a lot of cleaning to be done because it's been ignored for, I don't know, forty years.
Yeah.
But they can make some good starts on this, and especially if you get a hold of Mr. Okafor and ask him, you know, tell the problem forty-seven, because that's, that's, that floods a decent amount of area there, not just the property, but even Route forty-seven at times.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So you have no plans to increase the parking lot in the back? Do you go back?
No, it's going to, what it is right now is perfect for us.
Do you have tournaments?
We don't do tournaments onsite, no.
I can, so sure, but every now and then, we'll have an event that has maybe thirty or forty people. But we're not going to be, we don't have any plans to, you know what I'm saying? We're not going to host.
Because we don't want them ending up parking on our driveway going up to our driveway.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. No, the, the parking onsite should be more than sufficient for, for our needs, for sure.
How many, how many cars will a parking lot accommodate now the way it is?
Um, you know, trying to estimate, I think it could probably fit maybe twenty spots, or so, twenty, twenty-three. Yeah, maybe if you're parking a lot of signs and then along the back.
What's the footprint of the building?
It's about three thousand eight hundred square feet.
So you have seventy-six hundred square feet of parking?
They have way more than seventy-six hundred square feet of parking.
Yeah, okay.
You know, they, they have, they have quite, they have quite a bit more parking. I mean, for the Spice Company, you never saw more than, even on a busy day, maybe half a dozen cars. You know, but, and even then, and they, and if they park right in front of the building, the whole back park towards the middle, there's room in the middle and there's room towards the southern property line.
I believe that the lot was, the parking lot was built so they could get the tractor-trailers in to unload.
Right, yeah, yeah.
If it appears that we're not addressing the drainage or the parking or the green space or anything like that, it was all previously addressed and, and peer review engineer studied it and said the drainage would work, the parking was adequate.
That project went through site plan approval when it was originally constructed. And since there are no exterior changes or site changes, the, we're not going over all of that again.
Just getting back to the point you raised about both the drainage pond, when the original first set of plans came in, I believe there was a pond that was twelve feet deep. It was going to be ten feet below the grade level of Route forty-seven. And you could just imagine, that's a, that's a hazard, and it was massive. And when, and when the engineer came back in for the second meeting, I says, you've got to do something. Well, I'm, I'm designing it to help the town drainage. I said, no, just design it for your site drainage. He came in for the second plan, he hadn't changed a thing. And we told him, no, make it for the site, not for anything else. And the next meeting came in, she had gotten rid of the engineer, hired somebody different, it was an underground system, and the ground is just, I mean, there's never been drainage problems, as far as I know, and anything over there. And whatever she has works. So it's going to continue to work because there's no other changes going to be planned. So, just so everybody understands that. Any, yes, ma'am?
Basically, it's, it's going to be lessons for children?
We teach classes for all ages.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so as-
Specifically ages four and, and up. So we have a class for little ones, you know, you know, grammar school, yeah, seven teenagers.
But not, not like a health club type of thing, it's just going to be-
No, it's, yeah.
We don't need another health club, really.
Oh, no, and, and we, you know, with this, with the stuff that we teach, we teach, you know, ways, ways of moving, which are more kind of like a class, you know, curriculum oriented sort of thing. So it's not, you know, people don't just come in and jump around, it's, it's a very structured program.
Outdoor activities in the summertime?
So during, during the summer, we do like to, to train outside, if we can. I mean, there's a lot of green space at the site, you know, which is, which is typically during class times. Or, you know, if we run an extended program for kids during the summer, we do like to have chances for them to get outside. That is something that we do, we do like to do.
Formerly living next to the elementary school, it gets pretty loud sometimes, I'm just wondering how much activity would be in the summertime.
So our class sizes, you know, between ten and, and one of the kids, it's not like, you know, huge quantity of like outdoor exercise. Also, we have been, just so you know, we have been in operation in Hadley for fifteen, actually, Hadley and Amherst initially, for about fifteen years. And today, and we've done outdoor activities in various, been in a number of different spaces.
So you're not a startup company?
We're not a startup.
No, we've been, we haven't-
We haven't had any complaints about, about noise level or anything like that.
No.
Of course, we're, you know, we understand if somebody had any stream of noise, but I, you know, we, it's about discipline, about, we're not going to have kids like running around and screaming and yelling.
Yeah, so-
Where are you looking at now, then?
Right now, we're at Mill Valley Road. We're in there temporarily, we were at two thirty-one for a while, two thirty-one, that's the street.
The dance studio next, near Randy's.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Before that, we were Amherst, in a building similar to Mill Valley that had Comcast and other things.
All right, and the kids that we're also revising will stay right there because we have horses next door, and we have electric fence.
Yeah, absolutely, they will stay onsite.
Yeah, that can really hurt.
Yes, yeah, no, that's good, that's good to know. You know, we, we value, we, we highly value structure in, in the programs that we teach. It's, you know, we think it's very important for kids of that age to, to have a very structured program. So even when we do do outdoor activities, they're not just kind of let off the leash and like, okay, go run around.
It's a very busy road, too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and we, we totally agree with that.
We have a good, really good student-to-teacher ratio, so.
Yeah, as well as some-
And then we have two other adult, two other adult instructors and a whole team, teenage, teen leaders that are very responsible. We're never leaving them, you know, on, on the road.
Supervise, yeah.
Good summer hours, are you like looking to do if you're doing classes for them? There's not like summer hours that you-
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I don't mind you talking like that, but could you speak loud so everybody could hear you, that's all.
Yes.
I'm just wondering what summer hours would be.
So, so for the regular, the regular classes, they're still typically in the evening, afternoon, evening. So starting around like four for the, the really little ones. And then going until eight for the adults.
And our regular classes are usually only three or four times a week in the summer, we cut back a little bit.
Yep.
And then we do one or two weeks of summer camps. And those, the summer camp hours would be nine, from nine to three.
Yeah.
And we have indoor and outdoor activities during that time.
Yeah, I'm going to leave indoor.
Somebody else wants to summer camp out the road.
Huh?
Somebody else wants to summer camp out the road.
Yeah.
Sometimes.
See the real teachers do if they don't, you are.
Yeah.
This is probably the most exciting thing that's happened to that neighborhood in twenty years.
Yeah.
We're excited and hope that it works out.
Yeah, we're definitely very excited about it.
Other questions?
One other question is, are they going to be complaining, you know, barstools when they strut the manure up there? Are they going to start complaining about that?
Right, right in their D, they have a thing that says-
Yeah, well, that doesn't mean nothing, they don't live in town, so you know that.
You know-
We didn't live in Hadley, you can expect that.
We've been in Hadley for a while, so.
Well, this place is-
We, we get the, we get the smell.
Well, think of the Spice Company, at least they ordered from the Spice Company, sometimes not, not the smell from the place.
Yeah, it'll, it'll, and, you know, again, it's, you know, we, we do martial arts, you know, it's sometimes having to suffer is part of the program. So that's, they can, they can handle it.
Fresh Hadley air.
Yes, it's, it's farm, you know, it's farm time, that's what we expect.
After every haymow week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Guaranteed, too.
Yeah, just hope it rains right away.
You just don't keep your windows open.
Actually, it's not so bad now with the digester.
It's got a different, it's got a different odor now with the digest, I've noticed that, you know.
Yeah.
But anyways. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? Mr. Dwyer, make a motion.
Okay.
This will be a conditional approval, like I said, that when the invoice is paid, but, but Mr. Dwyer, make sure Mrs. Dwyer knows and he'll get it out.
Okay, great, and we'll take care of that.
This is seventeen, today's seventeen. But I keep it down to eighteen. It's just seventeen. I suppose we'll leave it eighteen on everything. What are we calling this? He's just calling the children, do you have a name for your company yet?
I do not, yet, we're going to be filing for a human due year.
Okay.
Is it going to be doing businesses, or you're going to be a?
I'm creating an LLC for the purchase. You know, the county school is a DPI.
We'll be, yeah, we'll be returning it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will make a motion to grant the application for change of use, local business special permit. Finding that the project is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. The project is not detrimental to the established or future character of the neighborhood. There are no exterior alterations, there will be no site changes. The approval is for the fitness and martial arts training proposed by?
Philip Myers.
Philip Myers. And any other use is prohibited without further approval of the planning board. This approval is subject to approval of other boards if and as required, including the Conservation Commission, the Sewer Commission, and Water Commissioners. Any project changes directed by other boards must be approved by the planning board.
Second. You know the discussion? A call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Both can pass unanimously.
Oh, I should make, let me just add, subject to-
A conditional?
Conditioned on payment of water bill.
Well, could you elaborate on that?
That's the only one.
And, and, yeah, thank you.
And I changed the address, too, right?
Yeah, thirty-seven, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Change address to number thirty-seven if okay with the building inspector. Okay, so add those two.
You got your checklist? Jim, the checklist, she had to sign. Oh, we don't need it for this. We don't need that, because he has no idea to this thing. Plus, he's already been in contact with all the other boards already, that's why he knows to be on the septic system. A change to the septic system.
We're using that for waivers, when people come in for a waiver, so they don't. They're, this one's going to, he's going to get the whole text.
I'll get to the file before we leave.
Okay.
I'll put the available labels in, I'll ask you the envelopes. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, thank you, everybody.
Good Christmas, everybody.
Good luck.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, I'm free to, you know, reach out to me and-
We're the neighbors directly.
Yeah?
So those, well.
Yeah, okay, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thank you very much.
Uh, I have, anyone here have anything else?
Um, just a clarification, how long does it take for filing this? And then there's the-
There's a twenty-day appeal period once the paperwork has been filed with the town clerk.
Okay.
Mr. Dwyer, I'll see what that takes.
I will, if I, I'll get it written up, so you just need to get the confirmation that the bills are being paid.
Yeah.
I, well, obviously, with the holidays coming up, I'll try to get it ready to go, but you sort of control when it actually gets filed.
Yeah, we're going to contact, we're going to see when it's due.
You can start working on the side of your town, you're on risk. Well, he hasn't, he hasn't even moved out, he doesn't even have the building.
Yeah, no, I'm still trying to get some purchase.
Part of the hard deal getting everything filed is the closing and getting, he doesn't own the building yet. The other Spice Company is still going to be there until the end of the month.
Yeah, 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 so, and we're, yeah, I think they're moving out at the end of the month, and then we get to finish our due diligence period in January. And then our hope is that the closing will be in February third, but it does ride a little bit on this, this premise.
Well, then that, that should be fine, so even if this doesn't get done until after the holidays, there'll still be a twenty, only a twenty-day appeal period. So-
And from the sound of it, it doesn't sound like anybody's going, there's no, there's no hard term, but they usually take it off, which is a good sign.
Yeah, great.
Phil, is that twenty calendar or business day?
Calendar.
Calendar.
So, so your next meeting is after the holidays?
The next meeting-
And at that point, you would finalize the wording on it?
No, 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 no.
Okay, that's all set.
The wording's been finalized.
Right.
The only thing that needs to get done is for Mr. Dwyer to type up what he just read.
Okay, okay, and that goes to the town clerk.
And for notification that the invoice is being paid, and then file with the town clerk.
Okay, great, okay. I'm just, I'm the broker involved on this, my name's Pat Patterson Jones, and I just want to be able to tell the owner what's happening, that's all.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I will make sure that the water bill gets straightened out.
So just-
We weren't aware of that.
Yeah, they were.
Like I said, I tried to get a hold of Diane, when I had a cell phone, when I had been shooting that, right? My cell phone, Spice Company picked up, I said, well, I don't want to start, I know Diane pretty decently, I don't know the new owner, and I didn't want to start saying, anybody mad, upset with each other, I says, I had no way to get a hold of Diane, I didn't have the right number.
She probably doesn't even know that it's unpaid.
I'm sure, because I don't know who's responsible for paying it, that's why also.
Most likely the tenant, so, yeah.
That's why I kind of didn't want to raise the ire, because it's not, it's not a monster bill. If it's notified tonight, I'm sure it will be taken care of, so I'm not worried about it not getting paid.
No, thanks for saying that, yeah.
So, just for clarity, I would suggest you do this, once you get it paid, you pay it through the, to the collector's office. They'll stamp it as paid. If you could email a copy of that to me, and you have my planning at Hadley MA address, then that'd be, once I get that, I'm not going to file this with the clerk and say it's conditioned on payment. I'm not going to file it until it is paid. But if you email, email the paid receipt to me, then I will know it's done and I will proceed to file with the clerk.
Great, okay, sounds good.
And I don't know what hours or what days she may be closed over the holidays, so there's a lot of, a lot of balls in the air here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get on that.
Sooner the better.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, it's two weeks, but no one's going to want to do anything with holidays in the middle of the week, so it's going to be kind of-
Try to get this as soon as possible, yeah.
Yeah, Diane's one of us, too.
Yeah, she'll, she'll be motivated. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I don't think we really have anything else to talk about.
Just take a look, just take a look at that housing trust form that I emailed you and gave you a copy of, see if you think anything should be changed, especially the dollar values. You think they're okay, should be a little higher, I don't think there should be any lower, but, you know, should they be any different? That's the same thing I mailed you.
So, one other thing. Folks, could you move a lot, could you move away from the door, please?
Thank you, yes, sorry.
There has been some discussion, Jim and I went to a meeting with the building. So municipal building committee is talking about the possibility of relocating some town hall offices to the Goodwood library structure. On and after the completion of the new library. One possibility is the planning board might be relocated there. So Jim and I were talking with the municipal building committee, there's issues of handicapped accessibility, there are issues of how much work needs to be done. Is it gonna have to be brought fully up to code, so there are a lot of open issues there, but I just wanted to let you know that it is on the horizon, sort of, as something that might be discussed further. So no action required, very vague on details, we told them we needed a meeting room this size, which we could share with Park and Rec as an, as an activity space. Because we'll only be using it twice a month. Park and Rec is another department that is earmarked to go to Goodwood.
We need an office about the size that we have today, and, you know, they asked if we could, they talked about, you know, first floor, second floor, cellar, I says, you know, putting us in the cellar of the Goodwood is fine, we don't care. As long as, if we have an office and a storage space, that they be next to each other, not all over the place.
And having all those files on slab rather than on wooden joists and second floor.
They didn't, they weren't sure that if they put our files on the second floor, if the second floor was strong enough, I says, 'cause we asked that question, we could put them on the outside, could do this, they said, could you be in the cellar? We said.
I don't wanna be in the cellar.
We said the cellar was fine.
No light?
Well, it's dark when we're in.
Mike, what was, what was the last time you were actually in the planning board office?
Well, the last time I was in the cellar of a building was fourth grade, Millie Fleeb, and they looked out.
Well, if the lighting would be, would be upgraded to see if you could see and stuff like that, that wouldn't be a problem.
But that's something that we, we don't actively use the office for much beyond storage, so we would, that would not be our meeting space.
Oh, okay. The meeting, the meeting room will, will certainly be on the first floor. Or, no, 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 just a storage, just the file cabinet storage.
I knew they didn't like us, I know they don't like us that much.
The, the meeting room will virtually for sure be on the first floor.
Okay, that's acceptable.
Okay, and we're just not sure, they're not sure how to divide it up, but they, there was still, they were gonna be hiring some kind of a.
Architectural consultant.
Some consultant to take a look at it and see how it could be divided up, what makes sense, what would be needed. You know, as far as both building code and plumbing and those things.
And ADA.
Yeah, 'cause they said, well, they weren't gonna make, they weren't necessarily going to make all the floors ADA accessible. And for a general comment, that's okay, however. Planning board is a good example, as well as a few others, we are an elected board. Should somebody get elected to the planning board that is handicapped and our office is in the cellar, you must now give them full access to the cellar ADA compatible. And it's not something you can say, well, we can have somebody know, it's gonna, the law is what the law is, and they says, yeah, you're right. And so they're looking at, you know, those issues as well, and they can have an answer, and that's okay.
I would just amend what Mr. Dwyer said at the beginning, which I think you said you and Jim went, but I was there too.
Oh, yes, that's right.
I was very quiet.
You were there too, yes.
Mark Dunn was there.
Yes.
That's right, it was a building committee, which was David Phil, Tim Nyarhart, Dave Wuschkavitz, Dave Tudrin, Bill, myself, you. The lady for the Park and Rec, I forgot what her name was.
Jenny.
Jennifer?
Jen. Jenny, there's already a Jennifer.
Jenny, okay.
And then the gentleman from the.
Oh, yeah, there was a Dave, was it Dave Regish?
He's on the, it was Andy Klepacky from Park and Rec.
But there was a Regish that was there as well.
He's on the municipal building.
He's on municipal building, and Mark Klepacky, none of them are Mark.
And the David.
That's not Mark, that was Andy, Andy was there, yeah.
And the David Phil that was there was senior.
Senior, yes.
To go back to this trust thing, just one comment, section four, powers of trustees be.
Please, please.
Yeah, section four, free to rent owners. Says, it doesn't make any sense, to purchase and retain real or personal property, including without restriction, this, that doesn't make any sense. Investments that yield a high rate of income or no income, you don't, you don't wanna say that.
Well, that, this is exactly.
I know, I know, I'm just saying we gotta change that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Generate current income or no income, or have a, have a current rate of return or no return. I didn't know we had to put that in there. Doesn't matter, if you're buying real property, doesn't matter if it's generating income or not generating income.
And, and like I said, these are college and one and all.
I got it, I got it.
Yeah, this is right from the West, the Whately thing, so.
You don't yield a high rate of income, you don't yield a high rate of return or high yield but not a high rate.
Didn't.
'Cause that's relative.
Back to my original thought, Jim, it seems like under section three, the select board is gonna do all the appointing.
That's right.
What if they don't wanna appoint the planning?
State law says.
No. Yeah, what if the select board doesn't wanna appoint the planning board?
Oh, they don't have to.
They don't have to, but I don't, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. There were, there was a meeting of the affordable, affordable housing focus group that Christian Stanley is running with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And there were, let's see. Our guy from the planning commission, a woman whose name I forget from the planning commission. I don't, don't remember if David was there, Chris, yes, David was there. Christian Stanley was there, Emma Dragon from the Board of Health, and there were two other people, civilians we'll call them, who are interested in it, so. We'll see what the, what the interest is. Well, these civilians will obviously have a interest to get more affordable housing into the community, and if there's only one member of the planning board.
Which, you know.
They're gonna overwhelm the thought.
Well, the trust document tells them what they can do.
But you don't have, you only have a small bucket right now to do this, you don't have a massive bucket that you can go out and do all kinds of things, you only got roughly three hundred thousand dollars, okay? If you use CPA fund, that's a whole different set of regulations that tie into it, and you need town meeting approval to expend that money.
If it's over a certain dollar amount.
Hmm?
Oh, you're thinking about the CPA.
So, and the trust fund.
I thought it was under a certain amount.
Under a certain amount, the planning board has authority.
Or the trustees.
To, to expend a large amount, the way this is worded, you'll need town meeting approval. That's specifically worded so that you can't go, so the trustees can't go wild spending money.
And beyond.
And if it doesn't say that, if it doesn't say that, if you read it, then if that's not the way you read this document, we wanna know that so we can make it clear that that's the case.
I gotta point out, it is the Hadley Affordable Housing Trust, that's the point of the trust, affordable housing, it doesn't mean you have to do anything today or next week or next year.
That's correct.
But the money's gonna be there for future projects, hopefully this thing will pull up over time.
That is correct. So I think as a practical matter, the select board will be very happy to have the planning board volunteer to be the initial committee.
I'm not so sure, because there seems to be an undercurrent, when we mentioned we have thirteen percent of our housing as affordable. They say we should have more, and as a community, I think we've done our fair share compared to the surrounding community.
That is true, but I go back to the comment, Joe, we only have three hundred fifty thousand dollars in the fund. You could, you can do very limited amount with that, you can encourage, you can encourage a developer that's really interested in putting in, you can give them a little bit of money, but it's not like you can go out and do. Three hundred eighty thousand dollars isn't gonna buy a lot of affordable housing.
Well, they can leverage it, some towns are leveraging that amount of money and borrowing against it too, so, but that's a whole different story.
But that's, we can talk about it.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll be on the agenda, we don't have anything else on the agenda for the first January.
That's correct.
So we can.
Be ready, be ready to talk about it, you know, find out, like I said, make sure that what I said about not being able to expend the big bucks without town meeting approval, I wanna make sure that this is, that that's in here.
Has anyone talked about this future affordable housing and where it's gonna be located in town, whether it'll be on bus routes or?
Not yet.
Well, that's key, I mean, they need, if they need affordable housing, they probably don't have cars, and they gotta be on a bus route, so it's gonna be have to.
Well.
These are all things we can discuss in January.
Bus routes, sewer, I mean, this. Those are all. And what are the sanctions, I mean, you know, you say if you don't have ten percent of your housing as affordable, that somebody can come in and overrule the zoning and put up their housing, but. It hasn't seemed to have the clout as one has anticipated, because certain communities only have one, two, three, four percent.
Well, that's true, but it's not a lot.
South Haven has zero, but who wants to talk about transportation problems?
Yeah, there's no, likewise, it's like Plainfield.
Right, Covington.
Plainfield. I'm talking South Hadley, Hatfield, Sunderland.
Yeah, well Sunderland is getting, Sunderland has got a forty, forty B shoved down.
They're building it now.
They're building it, that, that's getting jammed down their throat.
Where are they going now?
Well, that's right behind a corner, back to Public Tree Road and, and Route one sixteen over there, and corner.
If you go down Wild West Shattuck Road and take a quick right, it's in the woods back there.
And that was when we're, in Sunderland, the rent on all of those apartments on one sixteen is considered affordable.
No, forty seven, is it?
Four, no, one sixteen, well, there's one on, there, there.
Forty, they don't come, they don't come.
Yeah, I know, but people don't understand that. The one, there is a complex on Route forty seven.
Right.
And there is, there are several complexes on one sixteen.
Right.
And across all of those, the market has set a rental for student apartments in Sunderland that is within the affordability guidelines. But none of those apartments are counted for, towards the affordable housing, because none of them are, none of the properties are deed restricted to be affordable.
Which can only be changed if you change the state laws, right?
Correct.
States really screwed this whole thing up, I gotta say, they just really screwed, have screwed it up. Market forces, as Bill just told you, will take care of the problem, but they don't want it because it allows a vast bureaucracy to live in Boston on this, that's my eternal comment.
Okay.
I seem to hear some sentiment at the public meetings about the, the range, that, you know, there's affordable housing and there's nothing between. That was, I heard a number of people talking about that, and I don't know that, can we do anything about that?
Well, you know, you know. We've got a thing called Hampshire County and Franklin County and Hammond County, it's easy to cross the boundary and go someplace else. Each community, I think it's foolish to think that each community is responsible for this, that's why you've got fluidity. Oh, when my sister got married, they were living in an apartment up in Sunderland, Donna, I mean, you know, people went to Greenfield, they gentrified it, but that was, you know, this whole thing about it has to be Hadley is foolishness.
The other point, Mark, I mean, your, your point is valid, when people talk about this constantly, and there was an article about the, about an economist that is, he is from the American Home Builders Association. And he calls it the five Ls. Lumber has almost doubled in the past seven to ten years. Labor has increased, if you can get it. Lending, no longer can you get away with five percent down, you're gonna have a legitimate fifteen, sometimes twenty percent. Lot size, because of all the restrictions, whether it's APR or view shed, or the land is becoming constricted, so the lot size is more expensive. And the other one is local, we're talking spade-toed frog, we're talking the spotted turtle that took away four lots on Shattuck Road. So a lot of these local things are contributing to the high price of housing. So to expect that a community can turn all of this around, I think is, is a little bit out of bounds too, so.
In nineteen seventy six, I drove my Volkswagen to Houston, Texas, I had three hundred dollars in my pocket, a guitar, and a feather bed. And I got a beautiful apartment, one bedroom with a swimming pool, tennis court for a hundred and fifty bucks a month, okay? It was on a bus route, I worked in Houston, but the point is, there is affordable housing in this country, you don't have to put it all here, move someplace else, that's how you grow up.
So the other part of the equation is that if you wanted a range of housing, one, one way to do it, and he'll give you the counterpoint in a moment, but one way to do it is make it easier to build it.
Yeah, sure.
And in theory, if it's less expensive to build, it can be rented at a lower price point. But in practicality, people see what rents are going for in this area, and if there's not an incentive to keep them capped in some way. You know, if you build something cheap and rent it for, rent high, that's, that's more profit, so I guess that's, that's both sides of the coin.
To your point, it's easier to build things in Houston, Texas, than it is in Massachusetts.
Well, Houston had no zoning for a long time, but.
That's right, that's right.
For example, to Bill's point, the apartments that are being put up in the Mill district in North Adams where the Coles lumber of the yard used to be nineteen fifties, one bedroom. That's, and they're getting it, so the students certainly contribute a lot to the high price.
And part of it is our microeconomy and the demand, and, you know, the comments that were made at town meeting about the rezoning for senior housing were, you know, they're all fair comments, but the fact is that the market. What the market is looking for are the condos that Barry Roberts is building, and someone asked if, if they were affordable. And Tom Reedy, I think, had a good answer, which was to say that they're affordable to the people who bought them. And.
More interest rates helped.
The, the original plan was in three phases, I think Barry was talking about taking two or three years per phase, and he came back to us and said, I'm, I'm going all in.
Cause he had, he had, everything is virtually sold before he even started building them, there was a demand for them, he's got more demand, anyway.
Okay, which reminded me of something else I wanted to say.
We had the PVPC meeting that Bill and I attended, I don't know if you wanna report anything on that or?
It, main presentation was that PVPC has been working on model subdivision regulations, I didn't look at them in depth, but Larry Smith was their consultant. He came out of retirement to consult on that, so I'm suspecting we probably have a lot of the, the Hadley format in the, the new model bylaws. That was the big, oh, the other thing was, everybody's gearing up for the census, which is coming up in April.
Okay. Oh, town meeting special. Oh, town meeting, special election, public notice, to people listening and watching, there is a special election on Thursday, I think the hours are twelve to eight, is that right, John?
Twelve to eight.
Twelve to eight, and voting at Hopkins, so they're about the override questions that were passed at the fall town meeting, so I encourage everybody to go out and vote.
That's this Thursday, the nineteenth?
Yes.
Yes. I've got nothing else. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is history, thank you, and thank you, John. Merry Christmas, everybody.